Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call order the 1,694th meeting of the Board of Trustees of Metropolitan St. Louis Southern District. Roll call.
Trustee Kistner?
President.
Trustee Evans?
Yes.
Trustee Watson?
Yes.
Trustee Wilson?
Trustee Nicholasison?
Yes.
All right, we have a quorum.
Can I get approval of the Journal of the Proceeding Minutes, January 9, 2024? That'd be for the 1,693rd meeting.
So moved.
Second.
There are no comments by the Chair. Report of the Board Committees. Trustee Watson with the Audit Committee.
Good evening, everyone. The Audit Committee, February 4, 2025, Board of Trustees' Report. Audit Committee met on February 4 at 7:30 a.m. The meeting was attended by Trustees Wilson, Kistner, and Wabi, with Trustees Nicholasison attending online. Chairperson Wilson called roll and had no introductory comments. Minutes of the December 3 Audit Committee meeting were approved. The next internal audit presented a report of an audit engagement that consisted of a review of the district's procedures in administering emergency construction contracts. Specifically, the scope of the engagement focused on a review of the district process for identifying and assessing emergency situations, making emergency declarations, procuring emergency construction services, and managing the related contracts. Emergency contracts were selected for review and testing for the scope period of fiscal years '21 and '23 through '23. Population... Hit the wrong button. The population of emergency contracts for the scope period consisted of 10 contracts that totaled approximately 7.1 million in cost. Of the 7.1 million in cost, 4.6 million or 65% were tested as part of the engagement procedures. All three contracts were timed in material contracts. Engagement received a satisfactory or clean opinion. One opportunity for improvement was presented and discussed with the committee. The item focused on the timeliness of the execution of the contractual documents. Internal audit continued the meeting by reporting on the statute of previously issued audit recommendations stating that the items were... items remain open as December 31, 2024. The 20 items, 16 of the 80% are from 2024. The oldest items date back to 2022. Internal audit provided a status update for each of the 20 recommendations that currently remain open as of December 31, 2024. Questions were addressed by the internal audit as they received from the committee. The next Audit Committee meeting is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, March 4, 2025. The meeting was adjourned at approximately 8:15 a.m. This concludes the Audit Committee Report.
Thank you, Trustee. Thank you, Trustee Watson. Trustee Kistner with the Program Management Committee.
Good evening. The Program Management Committee met on February 4, 2025, at 8:19 a.m. The meeting was attended by myself, Trustees Wabi, and Wilson, with Trustee Nicholasison online. I called roll, had no further comment. The minutes of the December 31, 2024 Program Management meeting were approved. The agenda items to be introduced at tonight's Board of Trustees meeting were presented and discussed, including a detailed discussion regarding the following items. Ordinance number 16542, staff discussed an unplanned supplemental appropriation for MCO2 sanitary relief project. Additional costs for the project were due to numerous unexpected gas and electric utility relocations required, and additional pavement restoration required by property owner agreement. Ordinance number 16543, staff reviewed the details and bid information for New England Town Pump Station improvements projected project bid this past month. The actual project appropriation is under the original two-year budget allocation, therefore, the total project cost will be appropriated in the current fiscal year. Ordinance number 16323, staff reviewed the details of the Harlem Baden Relief Phase IV project currently in easement acquisition. The project will separate the stormwater from the combined sewer and reduce basement flooding in the combined sewer area. Staff has been unable to obtain all necessary property rights through negotiation. Staff is requesting authorization to move forward with condemnation efforts on 11 properties to allow the project to remain on schedule. There was a discussion between staff and Trustee Kistner clarifying property ownership and initial contact issues being encountered on the project. The next committee meeting is tentatively scheduled for March 4, 2025. The meeting was adjourned at 8:31 a.m. This concludes the Program Management Board Comments Report.
Thank you, Trustee Kistner. Finance Committee with Trustee Evans.
Thank you. Finance Committee met on February 4, 2025, at 8:35 a.m. The meeting was attended by Trustees Wilson, Wabi, and Kistner, with Trustees Nicholasison and Watson online. Chairperson Wilson called roll and had no further comments. The minutes of the December 31, 2024 Finance Committee meeting were approved. The district's Investment Advisor, NEPC, presented a review of the capital markets, followed by a discussion of investment returns related to the district's defined benefit plan. The plan's return was 8% in 2024, below the policy benchmark of 8.3, but above the assumed rate of return of 6.25%. NEPC also discussed recommended changes to the defined contribution and deferred compensation plan investment options. Mary then presented the Adjustment Review Committee Report as required by ordinance. Secretary of Treasury Tim Snook reviewed the district's operating fund portfolio as of January 30, 2025. Tim indicated that the portfolio is in compliance with the district's investment policy. The next committee meeting is tentatively scheduled for Tuesday, March 4, 2025. The meeting was adjourned at 9:22 a.m. This includes the Finance Committee Board Comments Report.
Thank you, Trustee Evans. Trustee Wilson with the Stakeholder Relations Committee.
Thank you. The Stakeholder Relations Committee met at the district headquarters on February 4, 2025, at 9:26 a.m. The meeting was attended by Chairperson Wilson and Trustees Kistner and Wabi, with Trustees Nicholasison and Watson attending online. Trustee Evans was not in attendance. Chairperson Wilson called roll and had no further comments. The minutes of the December 3, 2024 Stakeholder Relations Committee meeting were voted on and approved. The first agenda item was a discussion by Todd Ashbacher regarding an ordinance for a contract for legal consulting services with the law firm of Shands, Albert, Geonoculus, Gilgen, LLP. This contract will secure specialized legal consulting services on matters involving stormwater and wastewater rates and associated regulations, issues, and policies. This is ordinance number 16547 on the February 2, 2025 Board Agenda. The next agenda item was a discussion by Todd Ashbacher regarding an ordinance for a lease of district-owned property. This ordinance authorizes MSD to enter a lease agreement with the SCF Lewis and Clark Fleeting LLC for a 24-acre tract of real property owned by the district along the Mississippi River at the Lee May Ash Lagoon site. SCF Lewis and Clark will lease the property to use as part of its mooring and barge operations. This lease is for an initial five-year term with five-year renewal options. This is ordinance number 16548 on the February 2, 2025 Board Agenda. The next agenda item was a discussion by Todd Ashbacher regarding an ordinance for a contract for appraisal services. MSD property replacement values for insurance for major locations need to be updated as recommended by the district's property insurance carrier. The action will authorize the district to contract with industrial appraisal companies for appraisal services for the replacement cost of district facilities. It is ordinance number 16546 on the February 2, 2025 Board Agenda. The next agenda item was a discussion by Tracy Coleman regarding an ordinance for the district's classification plan. This action will update the plan to introduce four new positions as approved in the Civil Service Commission and its ordinance number 16549 on the February 2, 2025 Board Agenda. At approximately 9:35, Chairperson Wilson made a motion to move the meeting into closed session to discuss legal actions, cause of actions, or litigation under Section 62521.1, purchase or sale of real estate under Section 62121.2, in preparation for negotiations with employee groups under 62121.9, RSMO. At approximately 10:26 a.m., Chairperson Wilson made a motion to return the meeting to open session, and the meeting was adjourned. The next committee meeting is tentatively scheduled for March 4, 2025. That concludes the meeting.
Report of his executive director.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a report. It will be time to elect a new Chair and Vice Chair at the March Board Meeting, per the Board rules as stated in Resolution Number 3667. The Board Chair... The Board shall elect from its members a Chair and Vice Chair whose terms of office shall be for a two-year term beginning on the 16th day of March and ending on the 15th day of March, two years following. And the Chair and Vice Chair shall alternate every two years between a member from the City of St. Louis and a member from St. Louis County. St. Louis County candidates for the position of Chair or Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees shall be nominated by a majority of trustees appointed by the mayor of the City of St. Louis. St. Louis City candidates for the position of Chair or Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees shall be nominated by a majority of the trustees appointed by the St. Louis County Executive. The Chair Position has currently been held for the past two years by a St. Louis County-appointed trustee and will transition to a St. Louis City-appointed trustee. The Vice Chair Position has currently been held for the past two years by a St. Louis City-appointed trustee and will transition to a St. Louis County-appointed trustee. The results of the election at the end of the March Board Meeting will not take effect until March 16, 2025. There is no action for the Board to take at tonight's meeting. If the trustees have any questions about the process, please contact myself or Tim Snook. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Comments from the public? We have one. Nikki Burton. I'd like to remind you of the five-minute rule, and if you have any questions for MSD, please present it to them in writing so they could research and answer properly. Okay.
Thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you again for allowing us to have this moment. We just kind of wanted to talk to you again, bringing the concerns that we have in Bell Fountain, myself, some other neighbors. One of my neighbors is unable to make it, so she did send a letter, just kind of, again, expressing her concern, so I have that as well, as well as pictures from my basement. This was the last flooding event that happened on 11/12 of last year of '24, so I do have that for your review again. We've kind of heard everything from myself, I can only speak on myself, of a flat lateral system is the reason for the backup, that it's not a sewer issue, it's a watershed issue, and the groundwater backs up, and it's not absorbing. We've heard a lot of different scenarios, all the way from where my home is. I'm at the bottom, we're mostly on the bottom of the hill, I guess you could say, on the lower end, that water is coming from Griffin, which years ago, I guess, when they put the lines there, because we... our homes actually are in front of a park, Bell Fountain Park, and the thought was that maybe they were running and then the water would automatically go. There's a ravine there, a creek, and it would run there. So there's a lot of different scenarios, and at this point, none of them make any sense to any of us, because we're not engineers. We just want a resolution. We just want to figure out what's going on as we're coming with the springs... spring upon us. Of course, you can imagine, every time we hear a forecast of rain, we get a pit in our stomach. So for me, it's always, am I hearing my sump pump go off? You can smell it before I even hit the steps and open my basement door. It's one of those things that's very daunting. It's time-consuming. It's costly. My basement is still in disrepair as of this moment. I could not host Christmas nor Thanksgiving just because there's mold down there now, so we've got somebody that's currently, yet again, taking down the drywall. And it's disheartening, because you want to enjoy your home, you want to do all of these things, and, to be honest, I can't. I physically can't now because of my lung issues, because of the mold down there, which we did find black mold. It's just coming to a point where we just want a resolution, and we just want it solved. And I've talked to Bell Fountain, and they said they've been in talks with you, and it's not a them issue, it's a line issue. And I feel like... we feel like we're caught in the middle of it. We voted for the storm... the proposal for the stormwater and the wastewater, because we figured at this point, yes, we finally... yes, let's vote for this. We finally got something where we can interject some money into the community, whether it be in taxes and things of that nature, and then get some resolution, and yet here we are again, and there's no resolution as of yet. And so we just humbly come before you to say, whatever you guys can do, we just want it fixed, so that in that way, it's our home, it's our property, and you want to take care of it. And I've been in my home 27 years this month. The floors are buckling because of the water, and so I'm having to replace tiles. Again, it's just a very costly... it's just a costly endeavor. It's affecting my health. I can't continue to do this. I just can't. And I feel like I'm in a rock and a hard place. I don't want to move. I love my community. I love my home. I shouldn't have to move because of this issue, and so anything you guys could do, there's clearly something going on. We know this. It's habitually gotten worse. We've always gotten a little water here and there, but it's habitually gotten worse from 2016, and I have every one of those states where large amounts of water. But this time, last November, was the worst, and it was heartbreaking. It broke my heart. I've never seen my home in such a disarray, and we're just at our wits' end. So we just wanted to come to you. Like I said, I have these pictures. I have the letter from Ms. Olmex as well, and we're willing to work with anyone to just bring resolution to this and call attention to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I say a couple things, please?
Yes.
One, may I have the letter and pictures, please? And I just wanted you to know, and hopefully you've been communicated here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have been out inspecting all the sewers, and we are currently evaluating the sewer system for that area. We don't have any resolution yet, but we're working on it. Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Submission of Public Hearing Reports.
There are none.
Communications.
There are no communications.
Consent Agenda, Items 10 through 23.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're correct. The consent agenda tonight is Items 10 through 23. Is there any board member who would like to pull an item for a separate vote? Hearing none. Is there a motion for adoption?
Second.
So moved.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and second. Mr. Wabi. Trustee Wabi, are you... are you there? Oh, thank you. Ms. Kistner?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholasison?
Yes.
All right, the consent agenda is adopted. We will move on to ordinances. The first one is Item 24, introduction of ordinance number 16542, making a supplemental appropriation of $175,000 from the Sanitary Replacement Fund to be used for sanitary sewer construction in the MCO2 Watson to Edgar Road sanitary relief project in the cities of Webster Groves and Shrewsbury in unincorporated St. Louis County. Is there a motion for introduction?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Aye.
Ms. Kistner?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Watson? Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholasison?
Yes.
Item 25 is the introduction of ordinance number 16543, appropriating $4.6 million from the Sanitary Replacement Fund to be used for sanitary pump station and sewer construction in the New England Town Cliff Cave Pump Station Improvements Project in unincorporated St. Louis County and authorizing the district under into a contract with Cal Contracting. Is there a motion for introduction?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Aye.
Ms. Kistner?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholasison?
Yes.
Item 26 is the introduction of ordinance number 16544, declaring the necessity for the acquisition of easements and temporary construction easements and certain real property within the district for the purpose of construction of sewers and related appropriations in the project known as Harlem Baden Relief Phase IV, Darbert to 69th Street trunk sewer in the Village of Hillsdale, to serve the needs of residents of the area and authorizing staff to proceed with further condemnation efforts related to the project. Is there a motion for introduction?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Aye.
Ms. Kistner?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholasison?
Yes.
Item 27, the introduction of ordinance number 16545, authorizing the district to enter into a contract with Crawford, Murphy, and Telly to provide general engineering services for treatment plants, pump stations, and other operations groups to the district. Is there a motion for introduction?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Aye.
Ms. Kistner?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholasison?
Yes.
Item 28 is the introduction of ordinance number 16546, appropriating $59,590 from the General Insurance Fund to be used for appraisal services in order to appraise replacement cost values for in excess of 15 major facility assets of the district and authorizing the district to enter into agreement with industrial appraisal company. Is there a motion for introduction?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wabi? Ms. Kistner?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholasison?
Yes.
Item 29 is the introduction of ordinance number 16547, authorizing the district to enter into a contract with Shands, Albert, John Lachus, and Gilgen to provide counsel to the district on matters involving stormwater and wastewater rates and associated regulations, issues, and policies. Is there a motion for introduction?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Aye.
Ms. Kistner?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholasison?
Yes.
Item 30, introduction of ordinance number 16548, authorizing the district to lease certain real property of the district at... I'm sorry. I'm... I don't... that's right. At MSD property site 56 along the Mississippi River at Lee May Plan Ash Lagoon site for mooring and barging operations and execute a lease agreement upon the terms and conditions herein after set out. Is there a motion for introduction?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Aye.
Ms. Kistner?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholasison?
Yes.
Item 31 is the introduction and adoption of ordinance number 16549, repealing ordinance 16527, adopted December 12, 2024, and enacting a new ordinance prescribing changes to the classification plan to update classifications to reflect the introduction of new job titles. All changes have been approved by the Civil Service Commission. Is there a motion for introduction?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Aye.
Ms. Kistner?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholasison?
Yes.
Do I hear an objection to the suspension of the rule? Hearing none. Is there a motion for adoption?
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wabi?
Aye.
Ms. Kistner?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholasison?
Yes.
All right, we'll move to resolutions. The first one is Item 32, which is the adoption of Resolution Number 3937, expressing the Board of Trustees' appreciation of Robert L. Granbury for his 26 years of exemplary service to the district from March 30, 1998 to his retirement effective February 1, 2025. Is there a motion for adoption?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Aye.
Ms. Kistner?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholasison?
Yes.
Item 33, adoption of Resolution Number 3938, expressing the Board of Trustees' appreciation to Benny J. Kelly for his 35 years of exemplary service to the district from November 6, 1989, to his retirement effective February 1, 2025. Is there a motion for adoption?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Aye.
Ms. Kistner?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholasison?
Yes.
Item 34, adoption of Resolution 3939, expressing the Board of Trustees' appreciation to Paul Milton for his 32 years of exemplary service to the district from September 8, 1992, to his retirement effective February 1, 2025. Is there a motion for adoption?
Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Aye.
Ms. Kistner?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholasison?
Yes.
Item 35, the adoption of Resolution Number 3940, expressing the Board of Trustees' appreciation of Elizabeth Betsy Schubert for her 15 years of exemplary service to the district from May 1, 2009, to her retirement effective February 1, 2025. Is there a motion for adoption?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Aye.
Ms. Kistner?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholasison?
Yes.
Item 36 is the adoption of Resolution 3941, expressing the Board of Trustees' appreciation to Bruce L. Shelley for his 16 years of exemplary service to the district from November 24, 2008, to his retirement effective February 1, 2025. Is there a motion for adoption?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Wabi?
Aye.
Ms. Kistner?
Aye.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Did I skip you? Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Wilson? We got Mr. Watson, so Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholasison?
Yes.
And item 37, the adoption of Resolution 3942, expressing the Board of Trustees' And item 37, the adoption of resolution 3942, expressing the Board of Trustees' appreciation to David L. Ashton for his 40 years of exemplary service to the district from March 19, 1984 to his retirement effective February 1, 2025. Is there a motion for adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wabi.
Aye.
Ms. Kistner?
A resounding aye.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nicholas Zisson?
Yes.
All right, and with that, Mr. Chair, there is no further business to bring before the board tonight.
Well, call for adjournment? Motion for adjournment? So moved.
No.
Second.